Okay, now we are.
Okay, so then that way I can pull it up and I can look at it later, okay? And then, so I'll do that.
Okay.
So let's start with the finance committee. I'm gonna read you the things on the finance committee. I'll try and identify along with Gloria the things we've already done, and what's left, and what should be eliminated, if anything. Set budget timeline. Perfect disbursement policy. Review and revise investment policy. Understand current investments. Well, that's not. Review line of credit. That's not. Make ready accounts for tax levy reception. Okay.
I don't know what that means.
In my book, the only thing it meant is how we worded that motion to the board, and that's the only thing. And I was trying, the reason I asked you for where were the 2020
Minutes?
Minutes, which I still didn't find, is so I could see how that motion was worded to go to.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, the minutes. Uh, let's see, ten minutes. Yeah, it's on the, um, the minutes of January 8th, 2020.
Yes.
And that's where you're gonna find the wording for, for the motion.
Okay, and so that, so that is not an issue. So really, uh, the only thing the finance committee is working on is probably, I think they need to update and revise the investment policy. And the other policy that needs to be reviewed is the one on disbursement. Well, we did disbursement, but we've changed how we do it. So we need to re-review it and bring it to the board and send it to the lawyer to make sure that we're in order. This other stuff, uh, setting the budget timeline is probably too early for them to do that.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, exactly. So, so really, the finance committee, because it meets twice a month, is going to be on top of anything that relates to policy for them.
Okay.
Now, the next one is personnel.
Okay, can I interrupt for just a second to ask Gloria? When did you say the investment policy you found in the minutes?
That's the, the investment policy.
No, she's talking about the wording for the
Budget.
Budget. January 8th, 2020.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Next is personnel. Go ahead.
Um, Dan, can I ask you a quick question? Did you contact Ann and give her the information she needs?
Yes, I did. She got everything and then, yeah, and I came into the library and Mike took a copy of my license and was either gonna send it in or put it on Betty Sue's desk and then she was gonna fax it in or whatever.
All right, thanks, Dan.
That's great. Now we move to personnel. Develop agreement with the library director. That, we found, uh, the contract between the, uh, library director and the board. That particular contract has not been, uh, seen by the lawyer. Well, she hasn't seen the changes. So we haven't gotten it back. So basically, we just still have the old contract.
I guess I'm confused because then I last, and unfortunately with Greta, I believe Linda has stated, stated before the meeting, she had sent a copy of that to Greta.
Yeah, yeah.
Greta said she didn't have the chance to review it because we got it, you know, prior to three minutes before the meeting.
Okay. Greta is going to send me directly the last copy she has. So we can compare that to the ones that you received from Terry. Greta is concerned because by the time I was receiving things, they had gone through several hands and it not come directly to me. So once I get this, I'll ship you guys a copy and make sure it's what everybody's looking at, the same thing. Does that make sense?
Yes. Okay, so that so that is on the board and that should soon be resolved. Develop a board self-evaluation. That's yes, but not at the top of my list. Develop pay scales for personnel. I guess the personnel committee will have to decide if they want to do that. Review job descriptions. I think that's a must. And be confidential place for employee concerns.
No.
That has to come off.
That has to come off.
Does, uh, do, do, do you understand, uh, Dan and Debbie why that has to come off?
No.
It's not saying we can't talk to the staff, but it says that I can't come up to the staff and give them direction. Uh, that's something to do because I'm not their boss. The only person I'm the boss of is, are, not me particularly, but the board is the boss of, is Betty Sue. Betty Sue is the supervisor. However, there is one thing that I do think that, uh, is the personnel committee needs to consider, and that is, uh, a policy for complaints. How would a staff member, uh, complain? Make a complaint if not about a employee, about their boss? What is the process in that?
Can I, can I interject there? Um, I know that there have been employees who have gone to board numbers before. I would not have been in the pickle that I was in over going to Maryland if it hadn't been for an employee that had called Terry. I have said to the board, to the employees since the moment I started, you can talk to any board member anytime you want because it was a problem when I started, but they were not allowed to. Now, I don't
Betty Sue.
They have a right.
Betty Sue. Yeah, that's not what I'm saying.
What are you?
I'm saying that every workplace has a policy for complaints. I don't want anyone coming to me directly. By the time anything gets to the board, it has to be in writing. You're not catching me on the side or any board member and saying, I wanna make a complaint about so-and-so. I don't wanna hear it. If you have not gone to your supervisor
But I'm the only one.
And done your due diligence and tried to work with your supervisor to work the issue out. And before it comes to the board, it still has to go, it has to be in written format. We're, we're just, I mean, we have everybody walking up to the board and saying, I wanna make a complaint.
All right, you are absolutely right, Joyce, and I agree. And what it was finally explained to me after I'd been here for a couple of years is the process of this board should work like an hourglass. That when the board has something they want to say to me or to any other employee, it comes to me and then I disperse it to the staff. In the same way that the staff, when they have concerns and complaints, could come to me and then I want to write. So what
They come to you if they have a problem with the way you govern. They must first come to you.
But what I was trying to say
And work it out. And if that does not work, then they have to put it in writing and the board has to decide how or if they will hear that complaint.
Okay.
Because it may be based on our other policy. It's, it's not, it's not ours to handle.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
Let's say, let me ask this question. So let's say, let's go back to the fact that went to Maryland. So someone feels that was wrong and they went to a board member. They could have put it in writing to the board member or the board president as they did, but they should also have sent a copy to me.
Absolutely.
So you can go to a board, to the board president, but you have to go to me first. And then if
They have to come to me first.
It will, it will still come to me so I can't be blindsided.
Except for the whistleblower policy, the whistleblower, the whistleblower policy.
Yep.
The whistleblower policy.
You can't be retaliated.
But we're not talking whistleblower. We're just talking about regular, a regular grievance and all normal, and all normality would stop at June.
Yep.
A regular grievance stops at the director. The director resolves it. If the staff doesn't like it, they can leave and go find another job. Because if the, if the director is following policy, it's not gonna come to us. Or if it comes to us, we're gonna recognize the policy and we're gonna say, what you say absolutely stands.
Okay.
If the staff not comfortable, and I'm not, I'm just throwing this out there because my mind, and I'm gonna be off the conversation, I'm just thinking, what happened if the staff member is not comfortable with going to the director? I'm just throwing that out there because it happens in some places.
Yes, it does.
Uh, one place, when I worked in accounting, uh, what they were going to do was gonna put a box. And so if somebody had a complaint about me, it would be, they would put it in a box and it would go to the director, but they wouldn't sign, they wouldn't sign their name. So I told my director, my boss, if anybody put a complaint in a box about me and they didn't sign their name.
Yeah.
And he was not to call me in his office.
Exactly.
And then the next day, the next couple of days, they took the box away because everybody said, well Gloria, everybody's not vocal like you. But to me, some people, I don't know.
So I, I think that that's a policy that needs to be looked at.
Okay.
I think the first half of that policy is very easy to do. The second part is where we may need help from Niogo and looking at what needs to be done.
Can I make You know what, I'll reach out. I will reach out to the other directors and ask if they have a policy on when an employee has a concern that they don't wanna take to the director. Okay? So I'll put that out to them, yes, tomorrow.
Right. And, uh, but do we have a, an employee, do we have a policy for an employee to take a complaint to the director?
I don't know.
Uh, Betty Sue.
I don't think so.
So ask them to also give you, uh,
Okay.
Because you only want, when a employee comes with a complaint and they, and they write it down, you'll wanna track that as a director too.
Right, yep, I got it.
Ask if they have a regular complaint policy as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Can I make a quick suggestion?
And I think that is a, uh,
Hey Joyce, can you, can you see that Dan's got his hand up?
I didn't hear you.
Dan, Dan's been trying to ask, say something for.
Yeah.
Yes, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanna make a quick suggestion about this. What if we were to put one selective board member as a person that an employee could go to if they didn't feel comfortable in a Betty Sue? What if we did that, just had one selected board member that's posted to the employees that said, if you have an issue and you don't feel comfortable going to the director, this is the board member you can go to. Your cellphone, email.
I, I, I think, Dan, for that, you're asking us to go into the weeds. And I would not want to encourage that because you, you will find that we'll get caught up in such a legal mess that it would be more than we would ever want. You know, uh, because sometimes people tell you things that they don't have a right to tell you. And, um, I would prefer that we follow a policy where staff first go to their supervisor and then Betty Sue's gonna let us know what surrounding areas, maybe bring us a policy of what they have so the personnel committee can review it. Because once we start interacting with the staff, we're undermining the director's role and responsibility. And I, for one, do not want to be a board member and a director or a supervisor. Do you? No.
I'll see what I can find out.
Okay. Uh, so we will remove, and I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll try and update this list after we're finished.
Okay.
More work than I want. And it says, develop COVID-19 policy established as a separate committee. Well, Dan, you and I have been on that. And, uh, uh, it's been kinda stagnant for a little while because everything is based on what the governor is saying.
Yep.
Out. Uh, the treatment has not changed.
Nope.
Uh, and review staff evaluation after direct has completed them. I think we can sort of table that for now until we get evaluations and then we can talk about the process.
Okay.
Anything we need to add to this personnel other than, uh, looking at a complaint policy?
Yes.
Yes, what?
Uh, I don't know that you wanna take it up right now, but I mentioned it to you the other day, Joyce, that Ron Tower has submitted his resignation. So we are going to have to find a way to deal with the routine maintenance. Uh, and you might wanna look at that differently than has been done in the past, but we're going to have to have someone filling that capacity. So
Okay, so, um,
Look at the possibility of hiring a part-time maintenance guy.
That's one of the things you were talking about before and that may be what it comes down to. But first you need to figure out what is it you want this person to do? And is it a part-time, is it a part-time salary? Is it an hourly? Those are all the things that you're gonna have to
I, I think I think first, I think we would, well, maybe together to figure out
Personnel.
Personnel will do that.
The personnel committee
Yep.
Is, right now, I know, extremely busy because they have to complete the sick leave policy. Uh, well, which one is it? The, uh,
The PTO.
The PTO.
The PTO is the one.
Yeah, it's the PTO policy that has to be finished. And then, uh, after the PTO, then, uh, I would ask if they would start looking at the job description for a maintenance staff, for a maintenance person.
Can I ask a question? Also, oh, I'm sorry, Debbie, you go right ahead.
Well, that's okay, but I mean, I, I don't know who this guy is, what he did, um, and why, I mean
Okay. You want a little, I'll give you just a little bit of background.
Please.
He was hired when you first moved into this building. He originally did the lawn mowing and the snow plowing as well as routine maintenance. Over the years, they removed lawn mowing and snow plowing and those items were bid out every year. So it wasn't as much of a part-time job as it had been before. Ron has been paid hourly $27 an hour, which is more than just about anybody in this library has been paid. But the thought was, and I had no part of this, I inherited this, was that you weren't gonna find somebody to do it for less. I have no idea. Um, Ron used to come in here every Sunday and just spot check what needed to be done. He really hasn't done that in a while, though he has still been receptive when I have said, Ron, we need light bulbs changed or this, or that, or the other thing. Uh, but I, he, he said, you know, thank you for the opportunity, I've enjoyed being there, but I have another part-time job I'm going to pursue and I want more time for myself. He's 65-ish, so, you know, we all get that. So it's not, it's not leaving under bad terms and it is the opportunity to redefine what you're looking for in a person to do that kind of thing.
Yes, Dan.
Um, my suggestion on this would be maybe put a small committee together to bring up ideas, brainstorm what we'd like them to do. Then take it to maybe, say, um, finance committee to find out how much we could actually pay that person. Then bounce it to the board once it's, once it's all been done and all the Xs have been crossed and also run it through Betty Sue to see what stuff should be done. Then, once everything is done, once we have the finance committee on board, the other committee that's got the job responsibilities and got it all set, then we take it to the actual board for approval. I know it's not gonna
One other thing I would add to that, I think it would be worthwhile to run it by buildings and grounds because they know a lot of this type of stuff.
Maybe have the buildings and grounds and take it up. And then run it by finance committee once they have
And actually, all of those things will be done once we get, once personnel has come up with a generalized job description
Okay.
Uh, for that. So we're gonna charge the initial rollout of what that is to, um, personnel and move that, huh?
When do we have to do that?
Um,
When is Riley retiring?
The 13th.
Next week.
So he gave us no time. Okay, so we know personnel is busy.
Yep.
Nomination and elections. Explore, well, exploring legalities and logistics for absentee ballots, we can cross that out. Uh, things are pretty much set how they do, uh, the rollout for nominations and elections. We just need someone that follows the, uh, procedures that are already in place.
Yep.
And if there are any changes, the Board of Elections will notify us of any changes that need to be.
This committee doesn't work on the, on, on that. This is just elections and nominations for us.
Yeah, Betty Sue. What I'm saying is that for nominations and elections, we're, I prioritize it if there are issues with them, what they need. We don't need nominations and election, explore legalities and logistics. This is a cut and dry committee.
Okay, yes, it is.
It's cut and dry. There's no going out exploring nothing. You know, you just do
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about when we hold elections here rather than your elections.
No, I'm saying that committee does not go out and seek legal advice over something that's already been established.
Okay, got it.
Okay, they don't need to review nominee procedures. They need to perform the actions as already outlined and approved by the Board of Elections and the board.
Okay.
So they are okay. The next one is planning. Develop a one-year plan. Do we have a one-year plan, Betty Sue?
No. No.
You have a five-year plan?
No.
No? Okay.
The last time the planning committee met, um, I think Gloria, you were there. Weren't you, weren't you on planning?
A couple of years ago, I think.
Okay. We talked about, um, Terry was running the meeting and we were looking at the, the last one, three and five-year plan. And, and instead of just starting to plug things into it, I suggested that we look at those plans and mark off those items which were already done and then look at what hadn't been done and move them up into the one, three and five so that you're not reinventing the whole wheel. And at the time, I have notes on it somewhere, it, it was going pretty well. That was going pretty well.
Okay. Then, uh, we may need to reinstitute and resurrect that and take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Um, the one thing that I suggested to you, um, that, uh, oh, it's right here. Uh, uh, and, and I think this, when we're looking at one, three and five-year plan is develop brainstorming session. I'm, that's a, no S. With the board, the staff and the friends of the library. Where we all get together and maybe for half a day, we work as a group to look at where we see the library going, some of the things. And to have the people that are intimately involved with the library help participate in, uh, developing the one, three and five-year plan. How does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, no, maybe so.
Well, you and I talked about it yesterday and we were kind of excited about it.
I, I'm, I'm still, but one person doesn't make the
I know.
Yeah, uh, what do you think, Debbie?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, and I, I think when we meet as a group, we can decide on when that day or date would be. Uh, review safety plan. Do we have a safety plan, Betty Sue?
I don't know what is meant by a safety plan. We have lots of safety measures in place. We can pull them out and see if that constitutes
We do have a plan for emergency exits, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we've done some staff training on things like active shooters and stuff like that, though it probably should be done again. Because now they change the recommendations.
Okay.
So I'll write safety.
All right. And see, I'll just put director because that's something she'll do as staff.
Yep.
Develop code of ethics for board members.
That's not me.
There is a code of ethics.
That's what I thought, there is one already.
I don't, I don't think, we used to have one in the book.
Okay, we'll have to, we don't need to develop one, we need to review it. We'll find it and review it. Okay. So that's, that, uh, buildings and ground. Okay. The EV station, we can tick off.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, bidding HVAC system for, we've already done that for this year. Snowplow bidding, we've already done that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, children's interest, entrance and the children's garden.
I would put those off.
Uh, yeah, because actually, uh, because the funding is, uh, the majority of funding is coming from the friends and, uh, we would like to have them involved in it if we're gonna be getting money from them.
And we'd like to have children here.
But building and grounds, uh, once again, they'll be involved with the maintenance person. And maybe, uh, they too can be working on some of the things they would like to see them, see that maintenance person do. So that when we finally get a job description, all the people that are involved will have contributed.
Now, are we gonna have to get a guy in before we come up with a decision on what to do to hire somebody?
I, I don't think you can. I think you're gonna have to say to me, if we have a, it's something we have to get fixed, that I'm gonna find somebody to take care of it. Like, if there was a plumbing problem, I will call Doug Bauer.
Okay.
If there's something broken, I will call Joe Baker. If there's something about one of our systems, I will call Kevin Doherty. I will just use what resources I have until you make a decision. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, at least you have those resources to call, that's why.
I do, and when I don't, I ask my husband because he knows people who know people. You know?
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not worried about it on the short term. I wouldn't wanna do this for long.
The long term, we need to plan this because this has to be in the budget. Yep, uh, for the coming year.
Well, remember, we're already paying Ron, so you've got some money coming out right there. So it, there will be additional costs, but that should still be
It should still be manageable.
It should be manageable, yep.
Well, uh, local history, we don't have to do because that's already covered. Uh, that's one of those committees that doesn't meet often until we have an issue. So that's, that, I'll make sure I get that written up. Um, the next thing is a process for updating, adding, changing and deleting policies. That's under the purview of, uh, planning. And that's really your committee, right, Dan? Now, I, oh, excuse me, everyone. Dan, you, you had an announcement you wanted to make?
Yeah, I just wanna let everyone know, um, obviously, I'm gonna tell everyone at the next meeting. Probably March, at least March meeting, I will not be attending as I am going back in the hospital. I am actually donating a kidney to a young lady in Medina that's actually not doing too well. She's on double kidney failure and home dialysis four times a week. And everything had matched up on my end, so I'm gonna be going in, um, the beginning And everything had matched up on my end, so I'm going to be going in the beginning of March to do a whole kidney donor tour. So just letting everyone know that my absence will be, you know, noticed for a short time.
It will be noted.
Well, we wish you well and do.
Good luck, yeah.
Next, and this is just, well, I think, I think we discussed it at our last board meeting, but I just wanted to talk about it just briefly in the executive meeting that we know that contacting the lawyer does cost us money. It's not free. And we need to have a consistent way of interacting or dealing with the lawyer. And in the past, it has been through the Director. It got a little muddled. I would like for us to reaffirm that the Directors are intermediary. And if the Board or one of the members of Committee needs to contact the lawyer, that the Committee member make sure that there's at least one other person with them during that conversation with the lawyer so that you have a backup to what you heard and to what is done. There should be two people listening and not just one person. Yes, Betty Sue?
The other thing I have asked Greta moving forward is if she is going to send out an email to the Board President, because that's the only person she's ever dealt with in any case, was the Board President. Then I wanted to be included in that so that I knew what was going on so that when Board members ask me questions, I wasn't in the dark. And that's where, and she would like, she feels it's important that her office maintains our policy handbook so that if she needs to be reached for an issue, a legality, that she has our proper documents to give us the correct legal advice. So.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm glad that you said that because from my understanding, when Greta was here last, she said that if we updated or approved a policy in any way, that we should have sent it to her to preview and to say, yes, this is okay. And they keep a hard copy as well as notifying us that they don't have a problem with it.
Yup.
Has that been going on consistently?
Not at all.
We did a series of small policies, and I'm not sure that they all went to Greta.
No, they didn't. They didn't. But I don't know, I'm going, I need to send her another email. Barb and I were talking this afternoon. What, what her law firm produced for the Board was the policy handbook for the employees. Yes, she needs, she should have all of our stuff, but she didn't generate all of it.
Right.
So we can give it to her so that she's always got an accurate copy. But what, when, when you wanted to make the change in the PTO policy, I contacted Greta and said, can you send me this page? Because everything I have is in PDF form, so it can't be altered. Looking back on it, that's the way it should be. So that all the things would go to her, would then be produced into PDF form, sent back, and then we could reproduce them for people to put in their, their books.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I got this right now.
Okay.
So the law, they, they keep a copy of the Personnel policies?
I think they have a copy of our whole book, but they only produced the Employee Policy Handbook. Okay?
Okay, so if we change a word, let's say in the community dress code, you got to wear shoes, right? And a shirt. And we change that, we have to send it to her, say, oh, we changed this word. We really know it's probably not a problem.
I think we could tell them, but the only ones that she's worried about are those that they produced that were the policy for the employees.
Personnel.
Yup.
So basically, it's the Personnel policies, although we still need to just send her as an FYI.
Yes, yes.
So that's where my confusion was because we had a whole bunch of other policies. But Betty Sue, another question, would that include our finance policies or no?
It meaning what, Joyce?
If we change a process in our financial policies, would that have to go to Greta for approval or for review?
I don't think so. It would just, I would think that it would need to be, she would have to be able to have it available so that if we needed legal advice, that we handled something incorrectly financially, that she can go to our policy handbook and say, no, it's written right here. You did exactly what you said you were going to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so they just keep a copy of it, but they don't have to.
Yes, yes.
So it's only the Personnel.
And if that is anything different, I will let you know.
Policies that are really, okay.
Okay.
So that, that makes a lot of sense. It clarifies stuff for me now. Are there any questions?
I would just like to say the firing contact with a lawyer.
Yes.
I don't think any Board members should be contacting a lawyer anyway.
No, thanks.
In the past, the President, I know, it should be the President and the Director. Because you don't want to get too much.
You don't, you really don't.
People are contacting a lawyer. Nobody knows the contact of a lawyer.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody ever has.
The meeting was that she was the Board's attorney.
Yes, and not an individual attorney. How do you think that maybe we should put a motion on the floor at our next meeting, Dan and Debbie?
That says what?
That the lawyer should only be contacted by the, either the the Director or the President of the Board.
Yes, I would agree with that, but we should also have something in there. If President, it's unavailable.
Or, or designate, or designate me.
Designate someone else.
Okay, I would ask one, I would add one more thing to that. That regardless of who is doing the communication, all correspondence will go to both. The Board President.
Yes.
And the Director.
Yes, I agree.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll make sure I put that down. Okay, now I have on here this date for possible retreat. That's the day I was talking about the brainstorming. But I think when we get together as a Board, we can figure out what's good for that. Last thing I had on my list was to ask the three of you, how frequently do you want to meet? Monthly, every other month, every three months? It's, it's all up to you. I don't feel like we need, I personally don't feel we need to meet every month.
Obviously, maybe every other month.
Every other month. We can start out with every other month. But as things get tighter, we're going to find out that we might only need to meet twice a year.
Right.
But I think every other month. What do you think, Debbie?
That's, that's fine to start. I definitely would like it, you know, less as we move forward.
Yup.
Yeah, because to be honest, I, I mean, I'd say by the second time we meet, things should be a lot more settled down, and we shouldn't need to meet for another like four or five months, you know what I mean? This is just to get started and help get people, you know, help get our group on track so that we're all heading in the same direction. And because once that's done, I really only see the executive group meeting twice a year. Probably sometime in February like now, and then maybe in July halfway through the year. See if there's any corrective actions that need to be done as such. Because it's not meant to be a meeting.
A meeting.
I, that's too much.
Now, are we going to be switching this committee after the elections?
Oh, oh, there's one more, one more thing. I want to know what everyone thinks about having an in-person meeting for our meeting next Wednesday. We have enough space. The school district already meets in person, and they have the video. I just need feedback from you guys.
I have no problem with it, but at this point, I'm trying to stay away from.
I understand your rationale.
I mean, for me, just because I'm working such long hours to then have to go out on top of that and spend more hours at some other desk in some other place rather than just being able to sit at my home and listen. You know, I mean, we're, I'm doing this today. I'm coming in Saturday. We're doing next week. You know, so there's a lot of, of stuff that's library right now. And I'm, I'm getting so slammed at work that I just don't even know what to do. So I would rather stay at home.
Okay.
If you absolutely insist, I'll come in. That's fine. But my preference would be to be able to do it via Zoom.
To do it Zoom. We'll do it both ways then, and that will keep everybody in the loop.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and Betty Sue, I still would like to, if we can see if Mike can do that work.
I will, yeah, it's on my list already.
Okay, is there, just to give everyone an opportunity of anything that they would like to see happen or any concerns or issues that they would like to bring up this time before we, excuse me, before we dismiss?
Yeah, I got one quick thing. What are the chances after the election that this committee is actually going to change?
They will.
The committee will change.
Committees will probably change.
No, I mean, I mean this committee right here that we have, the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer.
They have to be re-elected at the meeting that announces who the new Board members are.
Yes.
Some years there were no changes.
Yes.
It just continued on, but it still has to go through that process.
And you still, yeah. Yeah.
Do we, do we have any names out there for people that could be running or want to come on board?
I've heard a couple.
Okay, well, that's good.
I've heard a couple, and, and a couple were kind of interesting. But I will pass those to Board members because I don't really think it should be something I do, you. I think that's something you guys do.
Yes, yes.
I will, as I get people's names who are interested, who I hear from, I'll pass them along to you, Joyce, and you can pass them along to whoever.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
I guess I'm confused because elections coming up anyway in May, right?
Correct.
So, you know, it's going to be advertised and everything, and anybody who wants to run would have.
Anybody that wants to run can run.
That's right. But sometimes it's nice to put a bug in someone's ear if they don't happen to see the advertisement.
Right.
But most of the people who run do come into the library, so that makes a difference as well.
Yeah, it does. It does.
And then the mayor still has to appoint someone anyway.
Right.
And school board.
Any, anything, Debbie?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
All right, a motion to dismiss. Gloria, second, thank you all. Thank you for taking time. And I want you all to know it's 8:06.
8:06, good job, Joyce.
All right, thank you all for taking the time.
All right. We'll see who, some of you tomorrow at 10:30.
Yes, I'll see you tomorrow at 10:30.
Okay.
God, it's not 10 o'clock. I need that half hour.
I know, I know. All right, I'm going to close us out. And those of you who are still here can just walk yourself right out that front door. The door will lock behind you, and I will set the alarms once you are gone.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Take care.
Okay.